Thirty seconds, board members, please check your microphones. Ten seconds. We're live in five, four, three. Welcome to the October 17th Special Board of Education Meeting. If you could please take a moment to silence your cellphones and then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jen, can you take a roll for us, please?
President Roush.
Here.
Vice President McFarland.
Here.
Secretary Ringold is here. Treasurer Lotterback.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Craig.
Here.
Member Horowitz.
Here.
President.
As we have an abbreviated agenda today, we'll go right to Request to Address the Board. First on the list is Bill Domino.
Good afternoon. What I wanted to talk about is regarding the packages that you sent out. And we've talked before about my request for a forensic analysis of what they find. Not necessarily they found a bad roof, but why they found a bad roof, so that we can really evaluate the current maintenance practices. And either they're going to be found to be adequate or inadequate. So going forward, it only helps everyone to know that we understand why. And I've mentioned before the things about the flat roofs. Did we use caulk that we know fails after three years? Did we use the most modern mastics to seal the vertical surfaces of the flashing? You know, there's a whole bunch of reasons why things fail. Northeast had a bunch of windows and stuff put in. If they find that those are leaking or around the outsides, were they installed kind of haphazardly or were they installed to the current best practices? Those are the kind of things that I really would like to have seen in this package. And it really is just to find out what the condition is as opposed to why the condition is. And I think that's something that, maybe it's something that could be amended later. But that would be helpful for everybody. It would give credibility to the current maintenance practices or it could identify that we really need to do a major overhaul for preventative predictive maintenance in the future. The other thing I would point out is the, some of the things I've noticed here, I think we're still going to be going forward in the bond with the free pre-K, which again is an issue for me. And I'd like to point out that Mississippi miracle, those people were not the highest echelon in the social strata and they've turned it around. It is clear that phonics and a heavy emphasis is where I think this board needs to go. So I would encourage you to look at that and the legislation that supported it, that they implemented, because their results are undeniable. And I think when we go ahead for the bond and you want to have better learning spaces, the new modern spaces, which I totally disagreed with, what did they do and why is their reading and math performance up to fourth grade, you know, one of the best in the nation, where they came from the bottom? And that's just something I'd encourage you to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Just understood on the roofs and the point that you make. On the phonics, I have a first grader and a third grader. Every single week, every single week, on Sunday night, I get an email from my kid's teacher that says, "What are they working on for the week?" Within that email is specifically what they're working on with phonics. This week, my daughter told me about how she's learning when there are two vowels together in a word and which vowel works. We are doing those things that you just mentioned. If you have any questions about it, we can address them. But please don't think for a second that we're not teaching phonics. This is how we teach reading. It's how we're addressing issues to make sure that parents are engaged in what we're doing to educate our students and how we as parents best work with our students to help the teacher throughout the day so that there is that trifecta of the student, the teacher, and the parent all working together.
My understanding was that phonics wasn't universally taught throughout all classrooms throughout the district. That's incorrect.
That is incorrect.
Phil, I'd like to add that we also just brought Ufly into the schools this year, which is, and certainly Penny can talk more about this, but it is phonics-based and we are using it specifically for the phonics for K through 2. So it's integrating into our current curriculum to boost the phonics.
Next on the list is Renita Bonades.
Good afternoon, Renita Bonades. I want to be sure I understand the purpose of today's special meeting. After the bond proposal was defeated in May, it was reported to the Midland Daily News and to me through FOIA that there was no cost for marketing in that campaign. I questioned that, but no update was ever publicly reported. Then the public was told that the district would take bids for a strategic planning firm to help get input from the community to better assess things going into the next bond campaign and prepare a marketing plan. Those 10 bids went to the administration to evaluate and choose the recommended firm. Why is this significant? Since the FFO committee did not take on this responsibility to review the 10 bids, it allowed the superintendent to make the recommendation. This means that unlike the standard I've heard for four years, that we always take the lowest bid would not apply. And indeed, the lowest bid was not taken and recommended by the superintendent to the board. For the general public to understand why the lowest bid is the default, it needs to understand why all the MPS board subcommittee meetings are off limits to the public. MPS believes because they don't take any votes and take the lowest bid, that no decisions are being made and therefore the meetings do not fall under the Open Meetings Act. I still don't agree with this reasoning. At the August meeting, President Roush said the district will pull out, put out a request for proposal, RFP, to do a new facilities assessment. I looked through this RFP and was curious about some of the seemingly duplicated efforts on the future campaign expenses. I noticed in this proposal that there's a request for information to assist in conducting public surveys, campaign services, including conduct meetings with community groups, assist MPS in all forms of communication, and prepare written and graphic campaign material for distribution and display. So is this really just a facilities assessment? And what is the contract with Omnitec with a base price of $43,750-plus actually covering? How many taxpayer dollars will be used to tell the community the truths about the needs of the district versus the wants? Or is this just to sell the bond better? The agenda packet did not include the three presentations, so I am to assume that the board members will be seeing and hearing this data for the first time at this meeting. The agenda packet should include what was provided to the board preceding the meeting and the agenda packet we received was simply the agenda that is available online. This means that the lowest bid will not be required because this meeting is open to the public. So how honest and transparent is the district being with the public? How many FOIA requests and how much money does it take to just, to see just some of what is going on here? What truth are we really to believe? And the board chose this date, which is not a very convenient time for the public to attend a special meeting. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Item three. Closed session, this does require a roll call vote. And 3.1, if anybody wants to make a motion.
Move to consider going into closed session to consider material exempt from disclosure by state or federal statute as permissible by MCL 15.26818, including a written legal opinion for the board that is exempt from disclosure under MCL 15.2431G. Support.
Motion by Ringold, support by Lotterback. Any discussion or questions before we take roll call?
President Roush.
Yes.
Vice President McFarland.
Yes.
Secretary Ringold is a yes. Treasurer Lotterback.
Yes.
Member Blasey.
Yes.
Member Craig.
Yes.
Member Horowitz.
Yes.
We're in closed session.
Thanks for bearing with us, Darryl and team. Just before we get started, give people a refresher on where we're at. As part of our ongoing process, we've started in on strategic planning. That is a separate process from this. And really what we're looking at with strategic planning is the profile of a graduate, making sure that we have community voice in how we're educating our students. And one of the other responsibilities that we have as a board and administrative team is to make sure that we are taking care of the assets that the public has entrusted us with. Those two processes may come together in the future. We have worked with the same construction firm, same advisors in the team that's sitting in front of us today. They've done a great job for us after 10 years. We want to make sure that either Barton Mallow or somebody else is serving the district the best. And I appreciate you going through that process again with us and make sure that we're transparent with you as we go through this process that we think it's incumbent upon us to take a look again. So, thank you. Each of the board members have, I think it was total of 10 RFP submissions that have been provided back to the district. We have had our administrative team review 10 different proposals. They've recommended to us to review three in particular today. We have all of them available to us as a board still to make a decision. But today, we will hear from three different firms. Each of you will be given 15 minutes to present and then 15 minutes of Q and A. Our board has also reviewed a number of different policies as we consider these, which are 2202, authority to enter into contracts, 2301, conflicts of interest, 2302, code of ethics, and 2503, which are voting requirements in consideration for potential selection on Monday, October 20th. So with that, I will start with Barton Mallow and turn it over to you, Darryl.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure my microphone... ...to continue this partnership. As you mentioned, we've been with Midland Public Schools for over a decade now and we're real proud of, you know, a lot of the good work that we've done here. I snuck a picture of the STEM Elementary into the proposal. I was the project manager on that job, came in under budget and on time, so just want to put that out there. I know that, I think this process that you're going through is laudable and we know that, you know, we're going to have to work just as hard to retain your business as we did to earn it. And so, we're here today to, you know, start that process again. Our proposal, I think, was designed with kind of one key focus, which was to put the resources in place around the district so that you can be successful through this process. It's a challenging process. You've been through it before. You've been through it before with us twice. And so, we want to make sure that we bring the right team to the table to help you through that process. We're going to skip introductions because the clock is ticking. We know we only have 15 minutes. But this is an impressive team in its own right, but it is also just a fraction of the team. So, as we talk, there we go, as we, you know, if we were to have the whole team here, I'd need a couple extra rows of seats here. I mean, it's going to be, it's going to be a broad spectrum of people that's going to help the district through this process. And we'll talk more about that as we go through. I want to start with this timeline and it's on the leave behind I have in front of you. As we move through this process, it's our job to make sure that we have accurate and timely information and deliver that to the administration and board to make sound decisions. We understand that through the RFP process, that the board is exploring a November of 26 bond program. And so, we felt it was important to talk about this in terms of a timeline and some key steps along the way and then how we're going to integrate with the district in those steps. I'd like to direct your attention to that orange check right in the middle. That is the board-approved plan at the end of May. So ideally, that is when the board would be unanimous on bringing a proposal forward through the treasury process. So, why that date? That is an important date because the ideal time for a pre-qualification meeting with treasury for a November election would be early June. And the reason that's important is because you want to extend the amount of time between the call for election and when absentee ballots are distributed. Right? So, if you look at that timeframe, that is a short timeframe from when you actually have a proposal to communicate until, in theory, votes start being cast. So, if you, if you do that in early June, you're going to extend that time. You could see that in that process, a day, a week would matter significantly. So, that is why we're working towards this, this May timeframe. So, today, we're going to talk about everything kind of to the left. And I'm going to start at the top and work my way down and then we'll start identifying some key components within that. So, up at the top, reputation management. Carrie with K-12 Media is going to spend some time talking about that. But what I would tell you is we're going to provide communication resources really from day one until the election. That is going to be a full-time job on top of a full-time job in order to communicate that effectively. Next step is strategic planning and the facility assessment. Those two things are really going to work, you know, hand in hand and inform each other. And there will be parts of the facility assessment that we'll do at key moments in time to make sure that we're integrated properly with the facility assessment. You'll see that the, the facility assessment really kind of goes on past the strategic planning. That's on purpose. It is really, what I would say is important for, to honor the work done at the strategic planning process. So, for example, you could imagine maybe CTE, I was thinking on the way up here today, that perhaps CTE is a focus that comes out of the strategic plan. The facility assessment would need to account for that and we'd make sure that was included. You'll also want some time towards the end of that process for prioritization. So, at some point, you're going to want to go to the community, that big part in the orange, and gather some feedback. That is an important step that we think is, is a step that you cannot skip and it is a step that we'd want to do before that, kind of that crucial May deadline. And then, as we move throughout this process, you see board presentations below, we're going to, you know, come to the board at key moments in time or as much as necessary to make sure that the board and administration are informed on the process. So that, you know, I mentioned the integration between the strategic plan and the facility assessment. Really, the first step of that is analyzing the infrastructure. So, there's really two parts to the facility assessment. There's the infrastructure, think bricks and mortar. And then, there's going to be this education or curriculum component to it as well. So, what we're going to do is we're going to engage with your facility professionals and we're going to engage with your technology professionals and we're going to do a facilities assessment on the infrastructure for each one of those, for each facility. And so, one thing I know about Midland is that they're going to, the community is going to expect details and data when it comes to the facility assessment. So, we have a team of engineers and consultants that are going to perform that assessment. So, we're going to have, you know, basically every discipline, mechanical, electrical, structural, civil engineers. We're going to have a roofing consultant. We're going to have a consultant that specializes in athletic fields. Barton Mallow Technology will be part of that process. Barton Mallow Technology will look at infrastructure, safety and security, AV, those types of things, along with Barton Mallow as the CM and your architect French. We're going to develop an engineering assessment and infrastructure conditions report that you can share with your community as well as share with the strategic plan, planning process. And, you know, we're, we're excited at the opportunity to work with OmniTech and we feel that, you know, we're excited to learn about their process so that we can incorporate the information that we'll provide towards that. And I think most firms may stop there, but I think there's this educational and curriculum component that is, that is very important and Dale is going to talk about that.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good to see all of you again. I think everyone's a familiar face, but it's good to be back with you, as Darryl said. And we do want to make sure that beyond the bricks and mortar aspects of the facility condition assessment, that we really do tie into your strategic plan. My analogy was to think of your strategic plan as a vehicle, something that sets the direction and the destination of your district. And in order for that vehicle, or the graphics suggest your school bus to take you to that place, you have to have an engine. And we really believe that your facility assessment will be one of the components of that engine. And so, I'm excited to introduce a new team member, Dr. Chris Stanley, to talk a little bit more about how we would make that connection.
Good afternoon, school board. It's a pleasure to meet you. I am a new face over here and so, it's very, very nice to be able to introduce myself and to be able to interact with everybody. I'm going to give you just a quick little background about myself. I am the Senior Education Strategist, a new role that we have over in Barton Mallow. Previous to that, I was an Assistant Superintendent for the Gross Point Public School System. I oversaw our curriculum and technology department, really looking for ways to be able to bridge that gap between the appropriate use of technology and how it can truly deepen student learning. I'm also a former building administrator at the high school level and a high school English teacher. I share all of that background with you because I've been in education over the past 17 years. I have that background and I've enjoyed every single moment of that. And being able to see it from that lens, I'm excited to be able to bring that not only into Barton Mallow, but to be able to partner with you too and your educators. So, how is this a little bit of a differentiator? I think it's really important to know that the number one reason why we're here, why we're all in these seats, is because we always want to ask that question, how are we impacting student learning? And that's really going to be the biggest focus when we are diving into any of these assessments. We always want to see how student learning is going to be the most impacted so that our students are not only learning, but they're thriving. So, how do we do that? We take a look at a couple of these different parts. The very first thing that we do is we make sure that the educator's voice is going to be provided. So, we're not only just working with facilities groups or we're not just working with the administrative team. It's so important to hear from the people that are living in the classroom at that moment. So, speaking with educators and understanding those classroom realities and making sure that we are going to be able to provide facilities for them so that they can have those, those beautiful lesson designs. Curriculum-driven strategy is extremely important, too. We know here that, you know, STEM labs are extremely important. The IB classroom is something that we always want to keep in mind and any type of flexible learning environment is going to be really important. So, when we're thinking about those specific designs or those specific assessments, we want to make sure that we're providing this material to Midland schools, not just for now, but in the future. And so, we want to make sure that we're designing these in ways that you don't have to do any costly changes in the future. We really want to make sure that we're doing this for our students right now at this moment. So, once again, it's a pleasure to meet you and I look forward to partnering with you.
Hello, I'm Mary Ann Seer. I'm a retired superintendent and now part of the K-12 Media team. So, I have to share with you how I came across K-12 Media. I was either in a role as Assistant Superintendent or in two different superintenencies in four different districts. And within those four districts, two of the districts had K-12 Media help us pass bonds and voter initiatives. And in all of the districts, K-12 Media helped with reputation management, branding, enrollment growth, and gosh, they even helped us launch a brand-new high school that we didn't think was going to get off the ground and they helped make it happen. So, here I am today as part of the team. And so, what I'm hoping is that we would be able to work together and move forward to help make this happen. And so, I've had the good fortune of working with K-12 Media now and I'm part of the team and I'm hoping that you'll look to us to move forward. I have to also share that I had the good fortune of meeting Penny through Massa and I have to tell you, it's been amazing. She was the interim superintendent when we first met and it's amazing to watch the growth that she's made. And I just want to compliment the board for making that choice in the superintendency because she's quite an amazing leader. And speaking about amazing leadership, I'd like to introduce you to Carrie Sink, who's our COO.
Hi. So, one of the things that we're kind of going to help out with, with Barton Mallow would be the overall communication needs that you guys greatly need, I think, in the district. And when we talk about reputation management, it's not talking about the fact that your reputation isn't good. It's giving the community more info than what they already have. Transparency, having them understand your needs and why you're here at this point in the game. I think it shows with what the last bond campaign went through, that there is some room that we can kind of come in and help support you guys so you have more of that bridging gap with your community. And so, it's very important that you start that from day one and not when you're starting to run for your bond campaign. So, we can help with storytelling, showing what's going on in your schools, what you guys are doing in the community and having that level of transparency with your community so ultimately, you guys are all on the same page. You are the hub of this community and we need to show that more to your community. So, we have a big team and we're all school people. Everyone that is in my company works for schools, so we understand your day-to-day struggles and needs. So, that's what we're going to be achieving with you guys.
Thanks, Carrie. Our proposal also includes the services of Byram &amp; Fisk and that is for that community feedback portion that we had mentioned during the timeline. Byram &amp; Fisk is a leading communications firm in the state and they're really experts in market research. And I was looking through some of the election data from the last election this morning and 60.59% of your voters were 56 or older. That is a demographic that is very difficult for school districts... is very difficult for school districts to reach. You'd imagine they don't have school-aged children, and they may not have, you know, a direct connection to the school. And those are really the people we have to go out and communicate with, and you're going to have to go out and show the proposal and demonstrate the need for it. So what we're going to do is, we're going to meet them where they're at through three ways. In-depth interviews, so you can think of reaching out to specific groups or specific individuals in the community. Think, you know, business leaders, senior groups, maybe faith-based groups. And we're going to have long-term, or excuse me, long-form interviews with those folks to bring that proposal to them and see, you know, what they're willing to support. Focus groups, think residents. We're going to, we're going to have to gauge the views and attitudes and test that proposal against them. We're going to conduct polls. These are scientific polls, structured questions, random sampling, statistically significant sample size. See if you can say that three times again. And all of that is going to be in a detailed report that'll be presented to the board. And I just want to jump back to this section real quick, and I just want to kind of read this to you, because, again, we're trying to put a lot in front of you. So if you think about from beginning till that May date, you'll have an engineered report that will be, have accurate cost information that you'll be able to share with the community and with the strategic plan. You'll have communicated with all key stakeholders, both internal and external, through your strategic plan, through the facility assessment, through the help of K-12 Media. You'll understand where your residents stand on the proposal, you know, through the polling and focus panel work that we're going to do. And you'll be communicating that from, from day one, every step of the way. It's just as important to talk about all of this work you're doing. Dr., or Mr. Roush, you talked about this in the beginning, is, you know, you're going through an extensive process. I think that's something laudable, and something that should be shared with the community. They should know all the work you're doing. We should work just as hard to share that as we do whatever the final program might look like. And we're going to do all that in time for you guys to make a decision in May, so that you have as much time as possible to communicate with, with your community during that informational campaign.
Thanks.
Just a, can we have a couple more minutes, finish on the last slide?
Maybe one.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dale.
Sure. Just very quickly, I know we're up against the time. I just want to mention that we think we've built the right team for this assignment. You have people like Daryl and myself, who have been here since the beginning of the previous bond, and all the way through, and leading up to this point. But we've added a lot of really important and strategic partners and team members to the mix this time around, most of which are educators, which we think is a very significant and important point to make. That allows us to not only do the technical, the bricks and mortar side of the assessment, but to really bring in and come alongside your strategic plan with your facility assessment, and make sure ultimately what it comes down to is, are you going to be able to, are you going to intentionally create learning environments that are best for your students?
And we, we do know this process. We know it well, and I think we know it better than anyone. Do we bat a thousand? We do not. I mean, we've been with the district now through two, two elections. But, but we, Barton Mallow and French, have successfully navigated that process more times than, than any other firm in the state. You know, as Dale mentioned, our careers have been spent in public education. I don't build hospitals. I wouldn't know the first thing to do on a Dow processing site. I'm not here to pour concrete. I'm not here to be a general contractor. We have one goal, and that is to produce a plan that your community will support. And we think we have the people to do that, you know, really from day one until Election Day. And so thank you very much for the time tonight, and any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. I'll open it up to my fellow board members here for, for questions.
So it's probably not fair, because I can't ask any other group that's going to come before us this question this afternoon. But what would you do differently, specifically on the facility assessment this time around? Because I think, you know, community members can certainly say, oh, well, it's Barton Mallow again, and French and Associates are going to put together the same thing they did last time. It ain't going to be a different, but we want to see something different. So how is, how is specifically for the facility assessment, how is that going to be approached differently or change?
It's a great question. And what I would say is that, you know, that facility assessment went back like two and a half years. And there were some things that, that were decided, like before that assessment even took place. There were some decisions that were made early on and from previous administrations, that we were kind of just moving those concepts forward. I think we're aware of some of the, kind of the bigger topics that were discussed, that were just kind of taken for granted, that that is the direction the district was moving forward in. We did, you know, produce documentation, kind of following some of those questions, to try to address some of those key questions. Now, doing it this time, we would certainly, you know, certainly move that to the front of the line. So we were, we were kind of just acting under the assumption that some of those things were going to be part of the plan. So that would, that would be my answer. I mentioned during the, during the presentation that we are going to have, you know, every, every discipline covered, and there will be a report that you can share with the community that will address any concerns they would have over, you know, whether or not your due diligence was done, whether or not the pricing is, is accurate, I mean, and whether or not the systems and materials you have in place need to be replaced. Yeah.
Thank you. I think I have a question for Dr. Stanley. I'm really interested in your input on how buildings and infrastructure affect student outcomes. I think it's really easy for us to grasp, if you're not welding on the, using a welder that's actually up to date, and something that's used out in the field every day, it's easy for the public to understand how purchasing a new welder will help a student learn today's welding techniques. But when it comes to the more traditional classroom setting, what are you seeing in terms of actually driving outcomes, and how do we incorporate that into a facility assessment and plan?
Sure. That's, that's a fantastic question. Thank you for asking it. I think what we're starting to realize now, not starting, excuse me, but what we do know now is, students today learn much differently than they did 10 years ago, 20 years ago, especially 50 years ago. Teachers right now have to compete with TikTok, right? And I don't mean TikTok in the classroom. I'm just saying, the way that we're absorbing and learning is just very, very different than it was from just a book before. And so it's so important to be able to chunk information now when you're working with your students. So it's no longer really just the days of the teacher stands in the front, the students sit in single-file desks, and that is where they're going to be able to receive their information. It's really important to be able to break that information down and to partner with your classmates. And so that teacher really is going to be that guide in the class. And so it's important to be able to set up your classroom for that way. Now, I will tell you, I did come from a previous district that we didn't have the newest furniture. We certainly didn't. I was in Gross Point Schools before, and it was more of a traditional approach to it. But by able to truly look at a classroom and saying, okay, if this is what we currently have right now, how can we still fit something this way, so that modern-day learning truly is going to be able to occur? And so I think that's really important, and there's a lot of different ways to be able to look at that.
Carrie, can you give us an idea of how K-12 will take that concept and present it and broadcast it?
Absolutely. I think a lot of times, especially when you're talking about the older demographic, they are on social media, so they can be captured. But once again, when you're talking about someone who's been in school 50 years ago, they don't understand the crowding of classrooms, right? They don't understand how kids are learning today. So if you're not showing that to them, do they ultimately think that you're just spending money to spend it? Do they understand what these dollars are really going towards? Especially when you talk about school funding, I think most people today don't quite understand the concept of school funding. It's so difficult for most people to grasp. My sister, her kid goes to Taylor Schools. And if you've heard of Taylor, they passed this huge bond. COVID happened. They didn't have the money anymore to build the structure. She comes to me, and she's like, well, they're just sitting on the money. Why can't they build it? They just, most people don't understand the concept of how a bond works, how the funding works, how it comes to the school. So our job would be to help you tell those stories, help clarify, be upfront, and be transparent, that what we're doing is ultimately going to show this is how a kid today learns.
So I really appreciate the bringing in, you know, K-12 and Byram &amp; Fisk this, this go-around. I appreciate that you really took to heart that, that piece of the navigating the differences after we, we did not pass the bond in May. Tell me a little bit more about your, those partnerships, and how, like historically, how Barton Mallow has worked with those organizations in the past, like?
Yeah, so we've most recently worked with Byram &amp; Fisk and Chipewall Valley Schools, which is, we've passed several bond programs with them dating back, I think, 15 years now. And that has been, you know, kind of our, our primary relationship with them. K-12 Media, we have several districts ongoing right now, and we, it'll be my job to kind of bring all of these resources to the table. So, you know, when working with Penny like we have in the past, there'll be key moments in time when, when these different firms need to be engaged in the process. And so we'll make sure that they're, you know, they're brought in at the right times, that they're, you know, up to date on the most current information, and that they're following through on, you know, whatever communication plan, you know, ultimately, we end up, we end up providing.
Can I touch in with that real quick? That it's very important that you guys know too. We always meet as a team, and we're always making sure that we're doing what the betterment of the client. So it's very important to know that we're not working in pieces separate. We're all together as a team, working for you.
Your community engagement, that aspect of your proposal was highlighted separately, and it's distinct from some of the other proposals in terms of the amount of investment. And it makes sense why, just based on all the, the services that you mentioned there. But can you, can you talk more about, you know, if we're going through a community engagement process, through the strategic planning process, is it necessary to have the same level of investment just for the facility side? Is there opportunity to find some synergy there between other community engagement that may be happening as well?
I mean, I guess what I would say to that is, I would recommend kind of the all-of-the-above approach. I mean, the strategic plan will have some reach, but it won't have the reach that you would have, you know, through, through a focus panel or through polling, which, again, what I mentioned earlier is, you know, kind of some of those key demographics. I mean, there, it is just difficult for you guys to reach them. You may get like a cohort go through like a strategic planning effort with you, but to really understand the community, you got to make sure you're not just talking to your, you know, to your internal, you know, district community. You got to get out and talk to people that aren't engaged with the district. And we don't, we don't see any other way in doing that, other than taking that step through that process.
And one other question. There were a number of bond proposals across the state that failed in May of 2025. Were you working on any other bond proposals, and what were the outcomes there?
Yes. So there were several, several districts that failed at that same time. Every story in every district is a little unique, but what I would say is, you know, kind of the common denominator, at least what we've experienced is, is a little bit of sticker shock. I mean, soon as you get to a certain millage rate increase, the likelihood of passage goes down, right? So that, you know, the more advanced, the, I would say, it's not just cost, but how complex the program is as well, right? Like, those things are two very difficult things to overcome, and we've seen, we've seen other districts similarly fail under those conditions. It's just, you know, it's a reality of, of the way that the district's financed, and anything that's above a certain millage rate, just, you know, it tends to be more difficult. And, but we don't, whether it's a four-mill increase, a no increase, or one-mill increase, we recommend the same process, and we work, we work just as hard, you know, whatever it is, whatever the value is, you know, we would be here to support it.
Part of May, too, was also the political climate. We didn't really see the huge political influence when we wanted to run the bond. We really thought, in May, things would have slowed down, but I think because there was so much happening at federal level, it really made voters uneasy.
So you've talked about community involvement. I believe that you guys are the only firm that doesn't have anybody who is local. Can you talk about how you kind of overcome that?
You know, I would say that, you know, just like on the last program, I mean, staff that would be on board is local. Our firms are not local. But, you know, we work all across the state, from as far north as Boeing to as far south as Monroe. I mean, we, we work everywhere. You know, like I mentioned before, we have no other motive, other than to help you find a program that your community will support. You know, that is it. And, and that's what we're here to do, and that's what we, we think we can help you with. Yeah. And I will say, I guess, just to, to, you know, talk further about that is, you know, the eventual program, which is where the, the bulk of, you know, the bulk of the money will go to local contractors when this is all said and done. You know, we, we have a very specific role here, and it's a small part of, it's a small part of the overall program. I think our record with, working with local, local contractors and repeat contractors was, was, was great, and I, I wouldn't see that that would be any different this go-around.
Maybe one final question?
Dale, facility assessment is an art, science, and an experience-based process that technology alone can't grasp everything that's going on in that. Could you give us an example of a major mistake that was made in facility assessment by your firm, and how did you correct that action after that mistake was discovered?
Well, thank you for that last question, Brad. That's a great one.
Did you expect anything less?
No, no, no.
Okay, just checking.
And so you, you got me on, on the fly here, so I'm going to go from the cuff. But I think it's a valid example that responds to what you're saying. I remember working on a technology center for, I don't think there's any reason not to name the school, there's a brand in schools. And we worked with a specific administrator and a specific tech director on the solution that they said was what their district wanted and needed. Before that was finished, both of those individuals left, and they privatized their technology department. So that facility sat for about two years, little, with little or any activity in it. And I, and I always felt like, you know, there, it was labeled as poor design, which maybe it was poor expansion of who we listened to in the process. But I would contrast that with what I think is a very positive example, and that's your Central Park Elementary School. We met in the design process, I think there was over 30 individuals from your district, educators, administrators, involved in that process. And what I would say is, because it was so different, and so unique, and so new, you did the right thing. You engaged in professional development long before it opened. And that's what I feel made that building's success. Not only the design, I think the design was part of it, but your investment in your team members to go into that facility and on day one, be able to utilize it properly. And the reason I make those two connections is, we can design a wonderful space with wonderful ideas, but if it's not implemented, to me, it's a failure. And so the last thing I would want to do in the assessment is to put something in there for career tech, and then have you, when it comes time to utilize that facility, decide because of your strategic plan, that you're going to go in a different direction, and we no longer need that space. That also is why I think what Chris said about flexibility is so important, because maybe we can't use it for that purpose, but we should be able to use it for something else. And I hope that in a long-winded and roundabout way, I, I answered your question, Brad.
That's a good, good answer.
Well, thank you again for coming in. Appreciate the proposal, and we'll follow up with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Take care. Thanks so much.
Nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you guys.
See you Friday.
Well, thanks everyone for coming in. We'll cover a couple of housekeeping items while we wait for everybody to come back. But you have a microphone on your desk, please just make sure you hold it up close so that the, the streaming can pick you up on the video stream.
The green is hot, so if you're just sitting in that talking, you might want to leave it red, just so there is all feedback across.
Oh, you're, thank you. And then we've got a clock as well. We've added a couple of minutes. I'll let you know when there's three minutes left and then you can try to start wrapping it up, just because I know doing this live is different than what you, you practiced. But welcome, happy to have you. Thank you for the work that you've done so far to submit the, the proposal and we will turn the floor over to the, to the team here.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Phil. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Kevin Bushy and I am the K-12 Client Lead for this team. I'm with GMB. We are so thrilled to be here to introduce this team and I brought with me-
Hello, I'm Becky Timberlake. I'm Vice President of our K-12 Market for Clark Construction Company.
I'm John Lynch, the President of Three Rivers Corporation.
I'm Brady Mills. I do communications and community engagement on behalf of GMB.
And I'm Nandita Mishra, Educational Planner with GMB.
We're excited to be here to walk you through who we are, what we do, and why we're so passionate about the projects here at Midland Public Schools. Founded in 1968, GMB started out as just an architecture and engineering firm. We've evolved since then and grown and today, we are a team comprised of, in addition to architects and engineers, we're a team comprised of certified educational planners, marketing communication specialists, K-12 strategists, safety security consultants, as well as building performance specialists. We put the students at the center of everything we do. So GMB specializes in education and education-only projects. From K-12 through higher ed, we, everything we do every day focuses around educational outcomes and the student, the impact on the student, the educators, and the community.
Clark Construction Company has been in business for 79 years and K-12 has been a core market since the day we opened our doors. It is currently our largest market and it makes up about 40% of our business. Our role will be to be, the, provide the budgets, do construction planning and sequencing for the potential projects. We have a pre-construction department of 19 dedicated professionals. They work half of their time on K-12 estimates and pre-bond planning, budgeting. We also help bonds pass, or sorry, school districts pass bonds with our in-house bond campaign, campaign specialists and marketing specialists.
Three Rivers Corporation is a general contracting firm that was founded here in Midland 50 years ago. We've been headquartered here ever since. We've had the opportunity to work on some rather impactful projects throughout our community. Dow Diamond, the H Hotel, the Heart and Vascular Center for My Michigan Health come to mind. But we've also done work for Midland Public Schools. We helped outfit classrooms at Central Park Elementary. We built the press box at Midland Community Stadium and we've done a variety of projects in between. Point being, this team knows how to build the thing, but there's an element here that we think is very important in this application. One of the things that we want to bring to your attention is that every member of this team has been carefully selected, the team's been curated, to help Midland Public Schools define and implement its future. So at Three Rivers Corporation, for example, we have 320 employees, 160 of them live in the district. We have people at this table who are dedicated to building and understanding buildings, but you'll notice that the bus for our team is not driven by the builders, it's driven by the educational planning experts. So in GMB, you're looking at a firm with national experience in planning and assessing educational facilities. They also have staff dedicated to communications and community contact. With Clark, you see a company that has a very deep portfolio in K-12 construction throughout the state of Michigan. And doing that successfully brings a wealth of knowledge in terms of what it takes to plan ahead and make things happen. Beyond that, Clark also has in-house staff experienced in public education, infrastructure, financing. And at Three Rivers Corporation, we're a company that is deeply vested in the Midland community. I would argue in a way that no other entity that you're gonna speak to today is. We have experience working specifically with OmniTech, for example. We've worked with Leanne Keller on a multitude of projects over the past two decades. That experience will allow us to integrate the work that's going on with your strategic plan seamlessly into the strategy required to go forward, bring the community together, articulate a workable plan, and bring it to life. Now, if I'm on your side of the table, if I'm wearing your shoes, one of the things that I would be asking myself is, why us? Why, why you guys? And the answer isn't just because you're from around here. There's an aspect of this where, for Three Rivers, for instance, we have 62 children currently in the Midland Public Schools system. We have a very specific interest in the long-term success of Midland Public Schools and what it means to our community. And how we get there together is incredibly important. When you look at Clark, they have a team member who graduated from Midland Public Schools, found incredible success with Midland Athletics, and has embarked on a very successful career in building construction management. Somebody who was born here, raised here, came through this system and understands what it's about. And these folks from GMB have a personal connection to Midland. Growing up here, spouse that lives here, friends and family that have children that come through this system. So for us, this isn't just a project, it isn't just a job. We understand that the facilities are the outcome driven by bringing the community along through a conversation regarding what does the future look like? That's the what, and there's also the how. And we think our direct experience with regard to the system and the community is the magic ingredient, or a very important ingredient, to get the how right. I don't think anybody else is gonna be able to present that to you.
So we are going to immerse ourselves in the community, the district, and the strategic plan, and we're going to listen. We're going to listen to what the community wants to see for the future of Midland Public Schools. We are going to listen to the no-voters and why they felt that they weren't wanting to support that last bond and hear what they want to support. This is not our plan, this is your plan. We are going to listen to see, hear what the future of education for these students that deserve this more than anything, what their future and their curriculum looks like here at Midland Public Schools. We are going to work hand in glove with OmniTech through the strategic plan. We actually worked with a strategic planning, a community-driven strategic plan for Huron Valley Public Schools. And when they did their strategic plan, at the end, they decided to close a middle school, demo a middle school, and build one new middle school on a campus with a high school and elementary, so that they had two mirrored campuses across their district. It was a difficult decision, but in the end, it helped support and pass their $360 million bond program to implement that plan. We are going to listen and work with OmniTech and the community and you, to make sure that that plan is realized for Midland Public Schools and we're gonna be your trusted partner to implement that plan.
And then, and when we listen, we learn. And part of the learning exercise is an exercise of getting to know you. It is an exercise of discovery and exploration. As part of the exploration process, I'm sure you're familiar with facility assessments. Of course, facility assessments are an important tool in understanding the age and condition of your facility. But when you're talking about schools, it's really the function of teaching and learning that is at the center of understanding if your schools are truly supporting the educational vision and the educational priorities that you have for the student experiences and student skills you want to see in your students when they graduate. I know you're working with OmniTech, who is helping develop your strategic plan. You're already a step ahead of many, many school districts, so congratulations for that. Understanding the skills you want to see in your students when they graduate, this is a process of working backwards from that. That is your goal. So working backwards from understanding what type of learning needs to happen to help build those skills your students need is what will tell us the type of educational spaces you need to have in your facilities. That is part of what an educational assessment, educational program assessment process looks like. We look to understand where your curricular goals are for teaching and learning, understanding the teaching methods you want to see implemented in the spaces, and connect that to the design of your learning environments that are just not functional today to meet your strategic plan, but are sustainable, you know, in the next five to 10 year, years for Midland students. In addition to that, we do lean on data a lot, you know, using, using research, using scientific methods to analyze the data around demographics, around enrollment, around, you know, even to some extent, water analysis, like understanding the full picture is what will help us really curate the right steps and the right vision for what your learning environments and facilities need to be to create the student experiences you want to see for Midland Public School students.
So my role in the team, as I mentioned, is a lot of community engagement and work with the communications efforts. And I just geek out about this stuff, like it is, is super fun for me. And so it's not lost on us that we're talking about listening and learning and then talking at you for 15 minutes, because I have a lot of questions and would love to, love to get into that and know you guys a lot better. I will say one thing, as I have learned about the last bond proposal, kind of watched from afar, it, I've been really impressed with the humility of this board and, and that is absolutely what we recommend in this collaboration process, the listening and the learning, like, and I know you all have already engaged with some of the no-voters to figure out, like, what, what is it about this bond that, that was so challenging and what can we do better? And, and so I don't wanna, I don't wanna duplicate things that you have already done, but just hear us saying, if these are the strategies we'd recommend and we don't plan to do them twice, we just want to layer them, layer them onto all of what you're doing. But I think what you'll find in this team is a really unique skill set when it comes to not only the campaign communications efforts, but through that engagement process. So like, me, for example, I'm in the room during the educational planning, during the, the community engagement from the start, and that's for a few different reasons, but one of them is that your community, they're the ones that this is going to matter to in the end, right? So it doesn't make sense to come on in the fall and say, okay, now time to flip it into a campaign, because that's not what this is. This is a collaborative process with the community. So, so I'm in the room, we're taking notes on what the community's saying, is resonating with them, what are these messages that, that really matter to Midland, to your community members, whether they were absolutely gung-ho no matter what was in the bond versus those who are really skeptical about it. And all those voices matter because, because true buy-in, true ownership is going to come from when, when a community can see themselves reflected in this process all the way through. The other role I have in that is really starting again with those people and, and identifying, who are your, who are your cheerleaders? Who are your community influencers from the start? Again, that go all the way through the campaign. So one thing, again, that I've been impressed with Midland is, is a lot, like, we, we've seen communities that have voted down campaigns before, right? And a lot of times, you don't see the level of support for the schools across the community and people still voting no. And for me, that's a really good sign, because that shows that you have a lot of people that want to see the schools succeed, they just didn't see themselves reflected in the last proposal. And we want to help you guys get there and that's exactly what we would spend our time doing. And then also just a, as that turns into outward communications, I, I know Katie is on staff and, and you guys have someone filling that role, we'll, we'll layer into that. We, we won't try to push you out, Katie, or, we wanna, we wanna really collaborate because I, I appreciate the forethought you already have in that. Yeah, so you all have seen our timeline, the schedule in both the proposal and the video. Obviously, we won't go into that in full detail today. I think if you could take anything away from this detailed look ahead, it's that time is ticking and that we would recommend starting now, and I think you all feel that too. So as we look ahead, just know we're ready, we could hit the ground running. And I'll just work backwards here, so right, so we're shooting for that November election date. And as I just mentioned, like, this is, this isn't something we can wait to communicate out until then. So, so we see this entire process as a communications effort. And, and even looking to, I mean, if you think about it, in September, that's when absentee ballots become available now and that's a huge deadline for voting. That's when a lot of, a lot of people are voting. So we take into all that account. From the start, we're, we're intaking, we're doing some output, and then we really work on that strategy, on how you activate your word-of-mouth communications throughout this entire, this entire campaign. And it ends up feeling tedious, but it's work that is absolutely worth doing to make sure the community really understands what, what will change and, and how to be involved with this next proposal.
So at the end of the day, you know, our team knows how to help build community trust and help the taxpayers understand why these projects matter. At the center of it all is having the right learning environments to support us kids. And on a personal note, I will say, my son is getting married actually in two weeks. He and his fiance moved to Midland and I am dreaming of grandkids running in Midland Public Schools. So yes, we, we know what this means and understand the educational vision and the alignment of space, educational learning environments, and student experiences are completely intertwined and interrelated.
Kind of to piggyback on that, our passion for our greater team and the folks that are submitted as part of our proposal, we all have individual ties to this community. I myself was born here, my wife was raised here, she's a product of, of Dow High, and I've got, we've got a ton of family and friends in this area. So the passion that comes through and what you're probably seeing, if you didn't see it in our proposal, I hope you see it now, is how excited we are to contribute to the students of Midland Public Schools, because unlike a lot of other districts that we do work with, we have that strong personal connection that's really driving our passion for, for success here in this community. You know, with a team that listens and aligns goals, the result isn't just new facilities, it's a community that believes in what's next. And with that, I'll turn it over for Q and A.
So at the end of the day, you know, our team knows how to help build community trust and help the taxpayers understand why these projects matter. At the center of it all is having the right learning environments to support us kids. And on a personal note, I will say, my son is getting married actually in two weeks. He and his fiance moved to Midland, and I am dreaming of grandkids running in Midland Public Schools. So, yes, we, we know what this means and understand the educational vision and the alignment of space. Educational learning environments and student experiences are completely intertwined and interrelated.
Kind of to piggyback on that, our passion for our greater team and the folks that are submitted as part of our proposal, we all have individual ties to this community. I myself was born here, my wife was raised here, she's a product of, of Dalhuy, and I've got, we've got a ton of family and friends in this area. So the passion that comes through and what you're probably seeing, if you didn't see it in our proposal, I hope you see it now, is how excited we are to contribute to the students of Midland Public Schools because unlike a lot of other districts that we do work with, we have that strong personal connection that's really driving our passion for, for success here in this community. You know, with a team that listens and aligns goals, the result isn't just new facilities, it's a community that believes in what's next. And with that, I'll turn it over for Q and A.
Well, thank you very much. Maybe my first question is for Brady. In your experiences engaging with communities, do you have any examples of when you've come back to a board in a district and said, now's not the time? You guys are scoping this wrong. I don't care if you have a November target, now's not the time. And kind of go through that process and how'd you navigate that?
Yeah, I was actually at a board meeting this morning where I was trying to communicate that. Yeah, I, I think, so in doing that, and, and I, I always come back to the word humility because I really, like, I'll start with answering it with the, the communities that have not done it this way and that have plowed ahead regardless. And when we see that happen, it is typically because there's a passion in the room for some specific projects that it's less of a, what does the community really want to see of this project? It's, it's, we want this project, right? And, and right or wrong, I mean, a lot of, I, I trust a lot of school boards and their administration teams, but if their community isn't resonating with that. So, so the tension we see is, is a plowing ahead. Now, I think, and when we talk about timeline, we would absolutely be upfront about if it's not possible. I, I actually want to pass it off to Nandita here too, because when we look at the timeline towards November, we feel it's very doable if OmniTech, if, if we're truly working in the collaboration that we've understood you all to be expecting and that we're looking forward to do. But if there's a point in that process where we're like, hey, community came back with some really interesting feedback here, we'll be upfront. We're not going to ask questions that we want to hear and answer too because we're ready to, to move it ahead. I mean, like, at the end of the day, it is not, no one, no one succeeds if, if we ram something through that, that doesn't make sense. Yeah. Do you want to talk at all about your thoughts on timeline?
Yeah, so, so I think it's important to understand, when we begin the process of ban, bond planning, we want to pull together stakeholders, a group of stakeholders that are very intentionally curated. Obviously, district leadership, curriculum people, we want parents, we even would suggest bringing on students as part of that group who have a voice and, and choice in the conversation. This group that is curated right in the beginning ends up becoming the players who become the main decision-makers or decision-recommenders to the board. So what happens there is they, you are already starting to buy ownership of the decisions from a community level right from the beginning through the duration of the process, and they eventually become your biggest cheerleaders. In my experiences, these, this process has worked pretty amazingly with many school districts that I have worked with, and I would recommend going down the same path. In terms of timeline, because you have a group of stakeholders that are engaged right from the beginning and are staying with the process through the duration of the process, when you get to the true campaign portion of it, once your bond application is done and ready and you're really engaging the community in the campaign process, you already have stakeholders in place. And the process actually already began on day one when the conversations around priorities for the bond program started.
I want to make sure we get to the heart of your question too. Do you, was that answered? Is there, are, are you asking, like, would we, would we speak up if we felt like this is not the correct timeline?
Exactly.
We absolutely would.
Absolutely.
And we were actually just talking in there, like, yes, we could see it being tight, but we, we feel that if, if we're working hand in hand with OmniTech, we're, yeah.
Absolutely. And I would add one more thing. One of the tools GMB has is we have a K-12 strategist that works for us, who actually only works with data, and actually came here with a whole bunch of data sheets all about Midland Public Schools, and we were trying to understand, you know, and that is where you start to really understand the school district. There is some really great information in here. Of course, we can't dig into it at this moment, but I would love to at some point really dig into it to really understand how to start shaping some of the conversations to move this conversation about the bond program forward.
Turn it over for other questions.
I have a couple of questions. There's a carve-out for the pre-election services in your, in your fee proposal. Can you explain what, what you're including in these pre-election services that are not going to be charged for? Because it also mentions that they will be charged if the bond is not successful. So what are we talking about?
I can, I can.
You want to handle this one?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about that. So the pre-bond process, you know, this whole process from us being engaged, starting, I would say now, to the successful November bond vote, the way our fee structure works is that this is a service we will provide at, at a cost, but the costs are not built to the district till after a successful bond vote. Should the bond vote not be successful, then you will get billed at that point for the bond services. So that's essentially what that category means. I'm, I'm.
So they'll be charged either way, but just?
Correct. Well, if the, when the bond passes, they are just deferred beyond, and if the bond doesn't pass, yes, there are fees associated with the bond planning services.
And what is, what is, is that, so that's in addition to what you quoted for the fee proposal, or?
No, so there's, there's two things at play here. So with this, so the, the dollar value that was quoted in our proposal for the assessment and alignment with your strategic vision and plan, that is the, the value. There was a second value in our proposal that was specific to should this team be selected for the next step, to take it beyond the successful bond campaign into design, planning, design, and construction services, then we would reduce that value for that fee in half. I think with the language that you're referring to that's in that proposal is, is in an, in an instance where we have a contract or a pursuit for an opportunity that is start to finish, where we are working with a school district to do the pre-bond planning, the campaigning, all of the things that are part of your RFP, that is typically something that we would defer until after a successful bond campaign, but that's not necessarily relevant for this pursuit because that RFP was just for facility assessments and alignment with bond campaign.
Okay, so there's not aspects of this?
No, there are no.
Campaign schedule?
So outside of the fee that's, that's identified in there, that's it. There's no additional charges, there's no additional fees. The only deviation from that would be should there be some success in moving forward with a successful bond campaign in the, in the district were to hire us to proceed with design, planning, and construction services, that dollar value shrinks down into half. It's a 50%.
Okay. That's not how this reads, but I'll take your word for it. The other question that I have, so are you, this group is a very strong group of companies that are coming together, you guys have a lot of experience. Are you, have you worked together before, your three organizations, and how do you see the three of you working together seamlessly for this project?
Becky, you want to take that?
Let me start with Three Rivers has worked directly with Clark on local projects like the Midland Community Center, for example. So we have a very recent local example of our partnership. Now, that's a construction-to-an outcome kind of project, and we had a very graceful relationship that's worked very well. We also have encountered Clark, worked with them on a couple of other things on a statewide basis, but the, the most recent applicable example is right down the street.
Yes, and then Clark has worked with GMB on several K-12 bond programs. So I think the relationship is definitely there between the three of our firms.
And that's historically speaking, but also currently, the GMB and Clark team are collaborating in districts in southeast Michigan as well. So we've, we've been working collaboratively together with the GMB-Clark team for many years, and myself in a previous life, worked on the East End Building here in Midland with Three Rivers Construction as well. So there's, there's quite a bit of history here between the team you see at the table and, and our greater depth of, of team that's in the proposal.
Last question for me. Did you have any projects that GMB or Clark worked on for the May, in May 2025 and other parts of the state, and if so, what were the outcomes there?
Brady, you want to take this one?
Specifically, the districts that were on the May election ballot? Yeah, I believe we had one together. Yeah, and it passed. It was really, yeah, we, so, and that's, that's another aspect too of, of obviously design through construction, working very closely together, but in this bond planning process, we, we both have extensive teams of folks who are experienced in this campaigning, marketing, communications aspects, and we, we flow back and forth. So typically, we'll separate, we'll say, okay, this person's handling kind of grassroots efforts, this person's handling district informational strategy, and then we, we work together.
I'm going to piggyback that question and ask Clark and GMB, did you have any bonds in either the fall of 2024 or the spring of 2025 that failed, and what did you learn from them?
So I will say that we did have three districts that were not successful in the spring of '25, and they were our northern Michigan districts. So they were based out of our Elpena office. We are going back out for two of those districts right now. One of them does have a new superintendent just because he's retired. And so we have learned that, like, we're going to reach out a little bit more to some of the no voters and, and some of the, the voters that didn't show up at the polls that day to kind of engage them more in that process. But I will say, as we've seen the X, the tax come around and districts having a harder time passing even zero-mill increases right now, that up north in the, the northern Michigan communities is extremely hard. So that was not overall surprising, but our southeast Michigan and Lansing districts have passed successfully. And I am a firm believer that is because of our campaign efforts and our marketing efforts, and that's why the GMB-Clark-Three Rivers partnership is even more amazing because they also have an in-house marketing and bond campaign specialist. And that's, that's pretty rare for a CM and an architect to both have those in-house. We both have those, so we both pride ourselves in having successful bonds, even with all the efforts against us right now.
Yeah, and to answer your question, so we had six bonds on the May ballot, only one of them didn't pass. And then we had only one on the November ballot last year, and that didn't pass. And both of those actually were, for kind of what we were speaking about today, they were, they were districts that, that just wanted, they had a specific idea in mind for their proposal, and we worked really hard to encourage them, listening to some harder feedback from the community, really making some larger changes, and then they just, they had, they had a vision they were sticking to, and it just, the community saw that and, and voted it down again on both of those. Yep.
Kevin, this one's for you. I see that bachelor's at Western and a master's at Eastern, so you know where I'm from. Fire up.
Well, technically, technically, my bachelor's is from Lawrence Tech.
Okay.
So, you know, it's not exactly the same social experience, but a good school nonetheless.
Okay. I love the local presence and all the local ties that you have and the experiences and the, and the relationships. I think that's awesome, but you're not going to get off easy. Facility assessment is an art, science, and experience-based process. Technology alone cannot reveal everything. Please give an example of a mistake that was made by your firm, firm in facility assessment that was made by your firm in this process and the corrective action you took. I'm talking about a major mistake. How did you fix it?
So generally speaking, the facility assessments are a benchmark of existing conditions, right?
Correct.
And so when we get through the process of identifying needs and infrastructure deficiencies, whether that's deferred maintenance, whether that's just age, end of useful life, that gets categorized, yours one to three, four to six, and seven to 10, to identify what that, when, when that net present value needs to be realized and the, the asset needs to be improved upon. So from a mistake perspective of a facility assessment, because it's a benchmark, I, I can't lean into a time where I can say that a mistake was made on the assessment, but what I can lean into, and I think this is what your question is getting at, is those mistakes, a lack of proper assessment that leads to design decisions causes problems and costs money. And I believe that that's where you're headed. Is that right?
Sure.
Okay. So, so in that regard, when a mistake is made and we've got, hey, we, we missed something, we didn't look above that ceiling tile, and there's a unit there, there's a valve there, there's, whatever that might be, we stand behind it, right? So we've got, you know, instances where we, we work with our client to say, hey, we realize that that $27,000 is not something that you can take back to the board to say, we want to, we want to remedy this problem at the tune of X dollars. We, we, we will, we will walk alongside you in that and reduce our fee or make, there will be compensation adjustments made to cover the costs of said mistake. We, we stand behind what we do, and, you know, it happens. It's certainly an aspect of what we do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess that was Becky that I saw on here went to Western Michigan. No problem, Becky, got it.
I have what I think might be a final question. We've got a couple of minutes left. More geared toward Three Rivers. Three Rivers has done some project work, albeit small, and spaced out over the years with MPS. Why wait until now to get involved? I mean, this is like major involvement that you're looking for with schools. Where were you the last bond or the bond before in '15? Why now?
We're not a K-12 constructor. That's the short answer. You'll, if you examine our portfolio, you'll see that we don't have a wealth of experience working with K-12 schools outside of Midland. We've worked with Midland Public Schools in the past because this is our home. Quite frankly, had the last bond cycle turned out differently and you were engaged in building the things that were articulated in that proposal, we certainly wouldn't be sitting here having this kind of conversation. We opted to get involved in this, I'll put it to you this way. I'm prone to looking at folks when I go out in the community and I ask them, are you a citizen or do you just live here? And Three Rivers is dedicated to being a corporate citizen in Midland. We're here because we think that with some forethought, the relationships that we have with these firms at the table and the people that we all know throughout the community, we can help this question mark around what is the future of Midland Public Schools look like move forward in a collaborative and productive way. That's why. Thank you.
Any final questions that we have not addressed already? Well, thank you very much for your proposal. Very much appreciate your time, especially since we're running late on a Friday afternoon. So thank you, and we will likely take action on Monday at our board meeting and provide feedback. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Take two-minute break? Or a couple-minute break? Thank you very much for coming to join us.
I respect that. Thank you.
That's okay, Penny, you can come, that'll find me. We're getting into the season.
Thank you for bearing with us as we ran a little bit later than we had expected, but I appreciate you sticking around on a Friday night. And we have 18 minutes on the clock, we have a couple extra grace minutes just in case, but the floor is yours. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Clinton Clark. I'm the Director of Construction Management for Woolgas.
Sorry, could you, I apologize, I should have. Thank you.
Have a seat, relax.
Sure. Okay. Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Clinton Clark. I'm the Director of Construction Management for Woolgas. With me today are Joe Powers, our Project Coordinator, and Senior Project Manager Derek Rickett. I am a lifelong resident in Midland County. Prior to joining Woolgas, I owned and operated a construction company here for 21 years, with most of my work being in Midland. My wife works at Blessed Sacrament, where she was a parapro, and then the school secretary until the closing a few years ago. We have multiple, multiple family members that have attended MPS or currently attend, including our own son. Our roots are vested here, and I have a vested interest in the success of Midland Public Schools. So on behalf, on behalf of Woolgas and Collaborative, I thank you for your consideration, and look forward to a possible partnership between our team and Midland Public Schools. Woolgas has been a local leader in the construction industry for 75 years, including a dedicated construction management division focused on K-12 projects since 1996. We are currently partnered with three districts inside Midland County, including Bullet Creek, Coleman, and Meridian, and multiple districts nearby, such as Banger, Bay City, Freeland, Claire, Shepherd, Mount Pleasant, Harrison, and Gladwin, and multiple other school districts throughout the state. Over the past five years, Woolgas has completed more than 40 facility assessments, with over 30 of them passing bond. Together with the Collaborative's 50-plus years of experience, we can provide you with the professional experience and proven track record to successfully complete your assessments, bond campaign, and construction projects. This time, I'd like to introduce Rich from the Collaborative.
Evening, everyone. And first off, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come and speak with you. So like Clint said, my name is Rich Brynek. I'm an architect, project manager, and senior associate with the Collaborative. Right next to me here is Matt Clarkson. He's an architect principal and our design director of our company. So we both appreciate that. Behind the scenes and not here is a whole team we have behind us, of designers, technical professionals, we've got planners, interior designers, landscape architects, and graphics that help us to create, you know, all the graphics and all the visualization that would go into any bond support, working out with this great team. The Collaborative is 52 years old, we're made up of 72 unique individuals over our three offices. We have an office in Ann Arbor, Toledo, and Columbus. We've been, really had the privilege throughout our history to focus on education, and have served over 160 educational clients, whether that be in higher education or K-12, with 82 of that 160-plus being K-12 districts throughout Michigan and Ohio. We bring a wealth of knowledge as far as our expertise into the education market, and we really, you know, we look forward to this opportunity, and hopefully the future of working with you as well. We also want to say, you know, we're really excited to be partnered with the team sitting next to us here. As Clinton mentioned, we have a longstanding history with Woolgas Corporation, we've worked together for a number of years, and most recently, we're working on currently right now four different projects at Ascoda, Freeland, Hastings, and Claire. Three of those had started just like tonight. They started by, you know, meeting the Board of Education, meeting the stakeholder groups, and talking about how can we support them through the bond efforts. Luckily, once those efforts were able to pass, we were able to move into the project. So currently, right now, we've got multiple phases going on of design and construction for all those different districts that are, you know, around the area we're at today, and partnered with this group for success. We really attribute, attribute that success for bond due to aggressive planning, as well as strategizing our solutions with the district. So it's working with the district and their stakeholders to come up with a comprehensive plan, as well as talk about how, you know, transparency between the community and the district for your needs and what you may be trying to project through the bond. And with that planning, we found success in getting them to pass and be able to work with you all and have those continued relationships. So thank you for allowing us the chance to introduce ourselves and be here.
Our joint venture provides full staff of dedicated personnel for success at Midland Public Schools. From planning, oversight, and involvement by Dave Sarah of the Collaborative and myself, to our project managers, architects, engineers, and administrative staff, we have put together a full team of well-versed, experienced professionals dedicated for each phase of the assessments, bond campaign, and construction. We have worked and have long working relationships with multiple contractors, both locally and nearby, that will be eager to work with our team on district projects.
Good, good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Powers. I am a retired superintendent. I like to refer to myself as a surviving superintendent. After 20 years, I was ready to do something different, and I've been with Woolgas the last eight years, and because still helping public schools, still helping students achieve, the whole reason you're here is the best education, success, how they determine it. So with that, Woolgas is, is different than, than some of the other companies. We've always had retired superintendents working with school districts. It's something that Penny knows, that we're, we're dealing with the public all the time. And with this facility assessment, which your IRP is related to, is, is a possible bond. Well, with a possible bond, attitude's in it, in it to win it. And with success, it really is based upon project design. And research shows that the quality of the project design greatly impacts the chance of success for passage. You're doing this for what's better for your kids, for your kids today, your kids tomorrow, and hopefully, a whole generation can be accomplished with this bond. And so that's the attitude that we come into it with, and it's just not about bricks and mortar. It's not about money, it's about kids and programming and students. Now, you need a roof, you need heat, you need STEM areas, maker spaces, all those things you need. But it's important, and especially when we work with the community, it's really to show the value of the project. That is what's critical to success. Now, what's the number one question? What does it cost me? That's the number one question. I think I am in triple digits of these, these bond projects, and it's funny, I don't care if it's a little school or a big school, is it Bay City, is it Mount Pleasant, is it Coleman, the same questions tend to percolate from the community. And so knowing how to answer that, like myself, my role is all of the pre-bond information. We have an entire team here that, that provides the information and the expertise for the district and the community. But the whole key is to come up with, just not, do we need to replace that unit vent in classroom 103, but what are we saying to the community? Why would I support this? That's the key. Why would I support it? And so I'm sure all of the companies that you're interviewing today are, are very proficient with, with the bricks and mortars. But what we do differently is we bring the educational and the communication angle into it. And, and why? So that the bond passes. So we, our IRP is a little different. We typically do our facility analysis for our clients for free. The IRP was for facility analysis only. So we did mention it, I, I believe in IRP, that if, if the bond passes and we do the work, the, the facility analysis would be refunded. So with that, and so we, we really had a little consternation over that. What kind of dollar value do we put on it? Because we normally provide that for, for our clients. Our attitude with Woolgas, in my 20 years as a superintendent, I worked with different architects, engineers, and CMs, I appreciate the integrity of Woolgas. Now, why are we different? Why would you select us to service you? We're different because of our dedication and our partnership. It's not this project, it's being a forever partner for you. We work for you, the architect works for you, but having a strong team with the architect is vital. You could pick this company and that company, but unless they can work well together, and we work very well with the Collaborative, honestly, I, I, I love working with, with the Collaborative. But our purpose here is to always be a partner for you. It's not about this project only. Most of our business, and, and we did work in, in Midland, I think it was a little over 20 years ago that, that we worked here, but most of our businesses only repeat, because we're committed to not a single project, but to be there forever. And so that's, that's one of the ways that, that we're different. Our local connection, our dedication, our expertise, our connections with contractors, we get really good pricing for, for the schools, because contractors like working for us, they respect us, and also, will problems occur? Always. But one of the things I always evaluate is, what do you do when there is a problem? We deal with it, a solutions-based approach, not pointing the fingers, looking at, oh, whose fault is it? How do we get this taken care of? And that's where the strong team work of the Collaborative and Woolgas comes into play. So on the timeline, typical projects, we, we start two to three years out, but really getting into the meat is 15 to 18 months out, is, is our typical project. With you possibly considering a November 26th, not a problem, but let's get rocking and rolling. So this, we're still okay in, in a timeframe, but we must start moving. And how do we move? And, and Matt's going to talk a, a little bit more about our, our community process, but the big key is working with administration, the board, let's hear what your ideas are first. And then typically, we, we work with, with community, whether it's a formalized focus group structure, surveys, focus, or community gatherings, but you got to have a community tie-in. One thing, and sometimes it, as a superintendent, I, I, I find myself being somewhat of, of a mentor to some of these brand-new superintendents, I'm like, it's not all about the school, it's all about the community, and the school is the heart of that community. And so having that, that community, and what I like to do is actually have community recommend the scope, the project to the board. And so the board's endorsing what the community action is. I think it, it's a nuance, but I think it's very strong, brings a whole lot of credibility to, to whatever your project may be. Obviously, I could talk forever, we're, we're on a timeline, I don't want to bore you, and so I, I'm going to turn it over to Matt. Thank you.
Yeah. So engagement, as you know, is very important. What we found great success in is, it's not just a one-time engagement, what we find is engaging with the community at first, getting their ideas and their thoughts, we go back and talk to you all about priorities, you know, I mean, you're going to hear like kids wanting roller coasters and those kinds of things in their schools, and then you're going to hear parents wanting things that maybe aren't feasible either. But we try to take those ideas and, and distill them down to what's really needed first, and then start to have some fun with the other ones, and that's working with you. The biggest thing is, is that we found success in, is getting those things on paper, whether it's through designs or renderings, or something that the community can see and start to engage with after that first series. And so we've actually gone back out to the community and asked them, you know, it's basically, is this what you're looking for? Is this something that you could buy into? You get the students excited about it by presenting it, you know, at school, they can take flyers home, the parents can see what that is, be very transparent about what we're trying to accomplish here, and having the community know exactly what the goals and maybe the priorities are, and then when that moves forward, you know, it's, it's not, it's not something that's hidden, or it's not just brought up to them for the first time. It's a slow process, it might take several meetings to do that. We've gone to, we've gone to PTO boards, we've gone to athletic booster meetings, we've gone to community engagement that's happened at the library, so people that maybe don't have students, you know, that are, they're at the schools, and they just want to, you know, they want to talk. We, you know, we've been the punching bag, we've also been the celebrity, so we can do whatever you need us to do. But it is about going back out to the community and making sure that they're heard, that, you know, we listen to them, and that we're executing some of what they're, what they're looking for.
And as a team, you know, we really try to, we mentioned we have number services, a number of services, sorry, within the Collaborative, and one of those is our planning department, our planning department has taken us nationwide, mainly working with private universities. So, you know, now, how do we want to use that for our benefit here? It's really, when we look at higher education, we're doing it all over the place, but our K-12 experience is all based around the areas we work, it's the regions we live in, is what we try to stick around with. But the advantage we find is taking that education, well, taking that knowledge of higher education and bringing it into the K-12 standard and typology helps students now get a space that's preparing them for the next level, so you're making a student's success grow with them throughout schooling and getting them ready for that next level. And with our diversity and what we do, we found that it's to be a good successor of what's, would set us apart from some other companies.
Yeah, I'll say too, that, you know, it's not just about the students that are on the college path, it's those that are going to be going into the labor force, and how do we contribute to them as well? Sometimes, you know, it's that starting from K, you know, kindergarten or pre-K, and then bringing them all the way up through 12th grade, you know, it's about teamwork, it's about building those, those relationships, how do you talk to people? I know that's really hard now with everybody and their cell phones, especially kids, but it's creating that, that idea that, you know, you're part of that community, that just because you're not going to college, we're still focusing on them as well, and how are they going to be able to take those, those traits and those things to whichever, whichever endeavor they decide to do after, after high school.
So I'm going to give you the quick rundown because we don't have much time. But my name is, my name is Derek Rickett, Senior Project Manager for Woolgas. Just like Clint, I was born and raised here. I have four boys that are in the district as well. And so as far as that local connection, it doesn't get much more local. In fact, if you guys need some sugar, I'm just around the block, actually, so I could walk here. But but that being said, obviously, I've I've grown up with a lot of the contractors that are in the area, the ones that we work with, know them well, not just, not just, you know, in a in a business sense, but personal as well. So plan to bring that same level of of expertise and that connection right to this district. Obviously, I'm very well vested in it and and want to see the success of building public schools as much as anybody, especially with four boys coming up through it.
All right, the clock has turned red, so I'm gonna wrap up in 33 seconds, now 30 seconds. So we we're here, we're dedicated, we, that's that's what really sets us apart, is is that we are here, we're going to be your partner. Midland County has 10 school districts that have taxpayers pay. We work in the other nine. The only district we're not working with currently is yours, and we'd like to work in your school district and service you and your students. With that, our our best example is what other clients say. We've included a a letter from from a neighboring school. This is current, this is relevant, and and we we just wanted to share that with you. But also, we're more than happy, you check reference from any of our clients. So that's that's what we're about. We we are here to service you and and your students, and and now I believe we're in the Q and A's portion.
Well, thank you very much. Very helpful. Thank you for laying it all out. Maybe one of my first questions is, you know, in in this packet that you've given us, there's a lot of different districts in here, which I appreciate the body of work that you guys have done. One of the things that the board struggled with the last time around was this repair versus replace decision. Is it more economical to build new, start over with some of our buildings or repair? Especially because Midland grew exponentially all at the same time, so all of our buildings are about the same age. How do, how do you work through that decision-making process with the community and and board? Do you have, sorry, and do you have any examples of where it's worked well in in both cases?
So I will tell you, a job we're doing with the collaborative right now, Claire, they really need a new building. Their middle school is over 100 years old. Community did not pass the bond. We had focus groups, everybody understood, that's how the money is best spent, but it was not supported. Hey, my grandfather went to that school. You're always going to run that, you're going to run that. So eventually, okay, we we reassessed. We went back and and we did a remodel, but we did a remodel as part of a master plan. Took a small bite of the apple. So part of it was, sometimes the number gets to be too big. And I think, you know, you probably possibly got some of that feedback as well. And so we took a different tack. We said, okay, let's take a slice of the apple, we're going to build new, but portions. And so that, because at some point you have to replace. But we really leveraged that information, that data through community, had the community come up with the plan with doing, take take a slice of the apple. It virtually every district we're at, we have that issue, new versus remodel. Honestly, what I think is one of the most powerful aspects is student programming, if it no longer services the students. And that's the power. I just think we get hung up too much on numbers and brick and mortar versus if you can say to the community, this is why it's better for our kids, that helps you get new with that. And I and I I know with your elementaries and your middle school, that's something that that you went through, your your last question. And so it would be at the forefront of this. And dollar-wise, we'd evaluate both ways. That would be part of the data we'd show, okay, do pros and cons list, this is what you get with remodel, this is what you get with new. And and by having community members endorse the plan, that it's not Penny's plan, it's not the board's plan, it's Midland's plan, really, I think, carries a bunch of power. That's what I found to 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 be the best. And yeah, we we have lots of instances, but I'll tell you, it's almost every school district, we have that same situation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one thing if I could tack on to with the Claire example, it's interesting because we see this in all districts where you may want to do more than you can right now. And part of this planning and, you know, strategizing and what are your priorities right now also leaves room for future improvements. So for Claire, for example, we've got a two-story classroom addition on one building and a gym addition on the next, but they want to connect them, they don't have the dollars right now. So we actively, through design, started to design both of those additions so that way in the future they could connect across. So we did a master planning effort to look at what would that look like? So as we designed those additions, the site around it, the utility stubbing and stopping, so that way it's easy to add on to in the future, and you're not trying to dig up your corridor you just put in. We actively worked with our partners, Derek and I were back and forth today on concrete mix designs for Monday. You know, we're working together as a team, and all this was done together. So we could be proactive to where if you can't do it today, that's not saying you won't do it tomorrow, and we can help you try to plan to get there.
Thank you. Other questions?
Can you talk about both teams, a successful bond and an unsuccessful bond that you have had since November of 2024 and November of 2024, and obviously, what you learned from both of those experiences?
Sure, I'll 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 take it. We we basically passed about nine out of 10 of our bond projects. Now, sometimes it takes a second attempt to to do that. What what happens is we advise, but ultimately, the board is the decision-maker. And so we respect that position. I'll tell you a bond that did not pass. Poor old Gwen, they live out, they're outside of Marquette, it used to be an Army Air Force base. The Army or the Air Force built all of their schools. They are all the same age, like within three years. They desperately, and they have declining enrollment, they 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 need to close buildings. The community has never passed a bond because they've never paid for it. So we failed that. It was a four-mil increase, and money is matters. Like, you know, even your last attempt, I'm sure you heard lots about 3.25 mil increase. You know, that is a way where sometimes we take a slice of the apple. Let's reduce the ask, and let's just consider coming back again in three, four, five years. And honestly, most schools that I work with, I've got them on a five-year bond plan. Take this, and in five years, when the taxable value grows, and your taxable growth value is fantastic, now you're going to be able to come back at a zero-mil increase. And so that's that, it's kind of kind of a a strategy that that we use. We 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 just passed Coleman, that's that's a local one. We just passed Bullet Creek, that and that, and that's a local one. We're working right now with with Bay City, an upcoming one. Bangor Township, Bay and Bay City Bangor. That was a tough one because 50% of the population is student or schools of choice. What we got was, they're not my kids, why should I pay for it? That was a tough one. We passed on the first one. We passed, we had about a community, a community focus group, about 80 people in order to do that. Also, it's very senior population. Every school, every community is unique. So analyzing the data would be one of the first things we do. And and working with Penny and her team, hearing what the administration and the board wants, as well as the feedback that they received. So we we would analyze that and kind of come up with a strategy to to attack it. So Rich, she she asked for for both of us to respond.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
No. Yeah, you know, it's tough because we all run into that. Sometimes, you know, you like to say, oh, they all pass, they all do great, but they do go down. You know, one example I can give from 24 was Whiteford Agricultural School District. Just, oh, exit five, now 23, and we've worked with them since 2018 on their bond support. They were trying to go out for zero mil. We've gone out twice, and it didn't pass with the community. Really, it's, you know, it comes down to things like, you know, turf. That's a big hot button in communities, and so how can you get that to go through or not? And so that's, you know, an unfortunate circumstance where it didn't, it hasn't passed. And so now we're actively trying to look at other strategies to work with sinking fund dollars, as well as general funds to shore up some of the needs and then get back out there and keep going with them. So it's kind of that tenacity to keep going with the district and keep supporting them throughout. You know, with that, though, I think it's it's a really good testament to say that is, you need a strong team to go by because, you know, we've we've worked on that with a couple of different teams, and it wasn't going through. And then, you know, most recently, I've been partnering with Woolgas on a number of these bond issuances, and that seems to work out the best for us. So, you know, we had, like, a SCOTA had passed through, and then Hastings was a little bit before 24, was one we were working on with, and that had passed as well. So I think that's where we can bring a real strong suit between our companies of a history of working together and having that partnership between design and construction, so we can make sure that you understand your estimates, your timeline, and you're not sacrificing the vision for the end product. So at the end of the day, you want your shareholders, your stakeholders, everyone in the community to see what they're going to get, and they get that, and they get it on time and budget. So we've had a lot of success in that regard.
And and also Julie Williams, she's another retired superintendent. She works with me with doing the the community involvement and the community interaction. We we're going to bring her, but we we're limited to five. So Julie said, I I can, I can find something else to do on Friday night. But I I do want, do want to tell you that that Julie Williams also works with me with with the community aspect.
The pre-bond is, that's Joe's area of expertise. But from my own experience, what I witness is you, you need the community support, obviously. So you need a lot of community intervention and discussion, and you need to listen to what they say. Because they'll tell you what they want and what they will support. And if they'll tell you, and you can get them on board, then they will spread that word and help support the bond passage. If they're not on board, it's not going to pass.
Can you guys explain to us who's going to be in charge of facility assessment and how that is going to come back to us?
Yeah, I can, I can start this one off. And, you know, honestly, I think it it is a team effort, and, you know, Derek and I are doing this currently with one of your neighboring districts. And we work back and forth when it comes to prioritization. We usually take the first step, and so I honestly tripped over myself, and I forgot to mention, we do have consultants involved. So we have Macmillan and Associates out of Bay City area, and then PEA for civil engineering. Now, we partner with them on many projects. We've had a lot of success where we will come in, architecturally analyze your buildings. Macmillan would come in or analyze all of the MEP systems, as well as the structure of your buildings. And then PEA, they would look at your parking lots, your site aspects. We look at everything from not just, you know, how do the buildings look? Do you need some tuck pointing? Is that boiler 20 years old and it's approaching its useful life? But try to look at also really architecturally, some improvements we can make. That's one thing we really, everyone, you know, we look at mechanical systems and all that, but it's nice to look at what improvements could we offer you, just some high-level ideas to better help your students with their experience and your teaching methods, and just try to throw out some ideas ahead of time. Now, coming off of that, we'll usually start at that point to come up with our assessments that we usually put into a presentation, and it will come to your board meetings, stakeholder meetings, whoever your core team may be, and we'll present that for each of your buildings of our findings. At that point, we start to get into prioritization. That's where we try to identify all the different items needed, and that's where we'll work together as a team to then quantify the items needed, set dollar amounts, so that way you can start to prioritize what you may want to include. And just like these guys have, you know, said a couple of times, is transparency we can be with all that and make sure that it's, you know, it's not just coming from you, it's coming from the community. Any kind of buy-in we can do there is always key and helpful. Then at that point, as we start to get those priorities, we look at the dollars, we identify how you want to proceed. That's where then we pull in, you know, man, our design team, and really try to work on visualization. We we found a lot of success trying to give renderings, video fly-throughs, marketing materials. So that way, if you're talking about an addition, you know, six classroom addition to this school, we can start to give you some visualization of what that may look like, and then we can give you an idea on plan, on cost, on schedule. So when you're coming out to the community, you're being transparent with, here's our plans moving forward, and here's what we've looked at. We still got to get through the whole SDDD, CD, all that process, the permitting, everything else that goes into construction. But as upfront, as much upfront work as we can do in planning work, we can do is really key. So it's really starting kind of on our end with our engineering partners and then partnering up with these guys to get you an end solution.
And we're right alongside them during those assessments. We need to get our heads wrapped around your buildings and what it is that we're seeing on paper. And once we we establish those needs and wants and and quantities, then Woolgas puts together the cost estimating portion of it. And we we work together at all, we're we're together at all the board meetings in looking at how can we, you know, if we're way beyond our our projected budget, how how can we bring that down? We assist with value engineering and constructibility, things like that.
And that really can't be understated. It's so, you know, we're not builders, we're architects. And so it's great, there's, you know, just recently, me and Derek, we're looking at one, and he's on a chair looking at a ceiling. Hey, these glue pods look like they may be hazardous containing, suspicious, so let's put it on the line items. And having that knowledge base of, you know, what they've run into in that assessment, it's not just architects and engineers, it's our building partners as well. So that can't be understated at all.
Any other final question from any of the other board members?
Got to give him my question. Come on.
You threw me off.
Oh, I'm guessing that this is going to be a combination of between Rich and Clinton. So you guys can tag team on this one. Facility assessment is an art, science, and an experience-based process. Technology alone cannot reveal everything. Please give an example of a large mistake that was made by your firm in this process and the corrective action you took.
We don't have any mistakes. That's a joke, that's a joke. I'm trying to buy time so I can think about an answer, so you know, you lead him with a joke.
Let me start.
Go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, I'll do it. So, okay, this is, this is probably one of my, the biggest things I talk about are mistakes because we're humans. Drawings are done by humans. Even though there's a computer, that computer is programmed by a human. We are not perfect people. And it's, and so my my job really through the years has really been just transparency. We are, and that's something you'll hear from people, especially if you if you pull it, you know, people that even know me. I'm ridiculously transparent, sometimes maybe so much, like too much so, where you're like, I don't need to know. But it is that transparency, we talk about a lot of things, we're open about it. If we have a mistake, we're going to talk about it. We're your partner. We're not just somebody who's going to, you know, dictate things or, you know, we're we're a CM, we're not an actual general contractor. So we're there along with you, by your side. You know, there's going to be mistakes that you guys make too, and we're going to be there to try to solve the problem. And so we're going to look to you guys, we're going to look to our whole team, or go, okay, I screwed up on this. We we messed up on on, okay, for instance, like a budget thing. Wow, way off on that budget.
On an estimate.
On an estimate, yeah. It's like, you know, and sometimes that's tough because we're we're really trying to look at historical costs. We're looking at what's happening now. The the industry we're in is is up and down, it's all over the place. And and I mean, I know you know that. And and so it's very, it's very important to be just open and honest about things. We have nothing to hide by any means. We're a kind of with our company too, or we're an employee-owned company. We don't have a a person at the top who's trying to buy a yacht or something like that. We all have a vested interest in our company. And that's just kind of a philosophy we've had as far as just being open and honest.
So your your question, Brad, pertained to the facility assessment.
Correct.
And I'll be honest, I've seen over the years, architects and engineers kind of slack off on this a little bit. And when we get into the construction portion, we're finding things that weren't found during the assessments when they should have been, or pre-construction, tie-in points. when they should have been or pre-construction, tie-in points. There's a lot based on pre-existing drawings. There's a reason that we have partnered with the collaborative. And that is because we're not finding that like we have with some other firms. We've had pretty good success. I don't think, you know, the four projects we've got going together now, I don't think we really ran it. You're not going to see everything. There's always unforeseen, but you got to stick your head above the ceiling. You got to get in the tunnels and you got to actually see what's there. And that's, we found that with, with the collaborative, very in-depth and, and proficient in what they do. And that's why we've, we've partnered with them for this, for this possibility.
Okay.
And we'll get that question. Did you look above the ceiling? Yes, that's one of the first things because that's where a lot of mistakes get made. But I can't tell you for an assessment, a recent one was, we did the whole assessment to a school. We're at the board meeting presenting it. You know, we had been in there, engineers had been in there. We looked at existing drawings, we had done everything you would do as part of an assessment. And the question came up from none other than the board president of, there's some cracking on this side of a building. There's a lot of cracking on the exterior wall. And have you looked at that? I'm thinking to myself, I missed this huge crack where, is the building falling? Like what's going on with this cracking that everyone was concerned about? And so, you know, transparency and honesty. So, well, no, we didn't, we didn't notice it. And, you know, we apologized and like, let me come back out and take a look at it. And so we came back out, we walked the building and sure enough, in this whole portion, original portion of the building, every single one of these eight classrooms, dead center on the outside wall, there's a crack coming down. And it's not on the outside, it was only on the inside, which is suspicious. So then we got our structural engineer involved as well. We looked at more existing drawings to find out that, yes, we missed it in the initial assessment or initial walkthrough. The issue came up from someone who's in the building day to day. So that's invaluable to get that information from someone who lives there. But to find out that in all the existing drawings, there was supposed to be a masonry pier there that never got installed. It was, the wall was completely flush. So there's a steel tube and about an inch of CMU that was on the front face. So that was all cracking on the interior, but not the exterior. So we were able to work with our structural engineer and give them in the next board meeting, yes, we missed it. We analyzed it. Here's the fix you can make. No one's worried about like the building falling in or foundations or anything like that. But we do have a fix by toothing in, filling that void full of masonry. You won't get that again in the future. So as an assessment piece, that's a, a recent fault that we had that we made sure to correct.
And it's actually related to the new versus remodel because we were not the original company with them. The company had told them, you have to tear down the building, you got to build new. They went for a bond, got hammered. And so with that investigation, that was part of what they were told is the building is falling in. And through our investigation, it was like, no, you can remodel this building for a lot less.
Yeah.
Those, those are parts of the facility analysis that help drive what might be your end goal.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you very much for coming in, especially appreciate your time on a late Friday. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Just wanted to quickly wrap up and see if there's any comments or questions, anything else that you definitely want Penny and the rest of the administration team to follow up on? I think tonight, or this afternoon, this evening. Yeah, whatever day, whatever day it is now. We've really seen some fantastic presentations and I don't think we have an easy decision. But any comments, questions, things that you need to address?
Question. Can, can you help us maybe supplementally before Monday, compare apples to apples with the different price estimates? I feel like some, I don't know that we have, like some of the proposals included additional services perhaps beyond just the facilities assessment. And just want to get your best, I guess, assessment of what's consistent throughout or what's limited just to the, the facilities assessment.
Yeah, we can put together a quick one pager that just shows those in comparison.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any comments about what we saw today that anybody wants to make? I mean, obviously it's going to be nice to be able to sit on, on the information review before Monday, but.
Time is decision. I thought it was three impressive presentations and well worth the time we spent tonight to be here.
Mm-hmm.
Before thinking about it over the weekend.
All right, well, we won't keep people any longer. You can still make the football game. And item number five is need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Horowitz, support by McFarlane.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Absolutely.